I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this text cloud, I pledge allegiance to the protect us one state under God, one and indivisible.
Welcome, everybody. Give a roll call, please.
Um, Alderwoman Poplin?
Here.
Alderwoman Jones?
Here.
Alderman Mandray?
Here.
Mayor, please. Mayor, uh, Morris?
Here.
Alderman Russell?
Here.
Alderman, Mr. Green?
Here.
We inform.
Uh, any couple of comments or emails? Anybody called in?
Uh, not yet.
Item for business, actually, I wanted to, uh, address that the reason we have these workshop meetings is just to get us ready, meaning for us to communicate what's about to happen for the next meeting, the third, uh, which is usually the third Monday. Uh, I was looking for council suggestions, uh, community, community suggestions, please contact your aldermen and they can bring up lots of suggestions to us and, uh, we're looking to, uh, make things happen. Uh, I'm first item for discussion is fiscal year 2021 to 2022 budget and financial workshop. I do want to remind everybody that this, we, this, this open communicate, uh, opens discussions, but we will have order, you know, when we talk one at a time, no interrupting, hold your hand up to talk. So.
Mr. McGrath?
There's a couple of items, obviously, on the, uh, the budget. First off, we, we finally have a, a good snapshot of the numbers. Thank God for Debbie, she's worked diligently through this, uh, cause and, and so the numbers that we're getting, uh, across the board are clean. Now, what we're finding is there's a lot of adjustments that we need to do between the line categories and things that have been throughout the years misapplied into different categories, so we're cleaning up those items now. We're also trying to identify any accounting error, accounting lines that need to be added in each one of the budgetary areas because we're gonna have to even create a little bit more clear budget so anyone that would look at the budget can clearly understand it. As you well know, now that you have a copy of it, there's still a lot of stuff within the lines that are fairly confusing. And so as we're going through the process and the long road that Debbie is here, and she hadn't quite made, what, too much yet, so, uh, she's doing a real good job of putting those numbers across. There's two really things in the, the agenda, uh, today concerning the budget that, that we really want to address. The very first thing is the schedule for the financial workshops. I, I did give each one of you a handout and if you would look at the 2022 fiscal year budget information, you'll see that schedule. Uh, this is obviously the first scheduled rollout meeting. In this meeting, we want to go with the initial budget process overview. The next meeting is actually next week prior to the city council meeting, so we're gonna start the city council meeting thirty minutes early for the budget workshop. However, it will, it will be on the agenda that the regular city council meeting will, uh, take place after the budgetary meeting in case you guys need more than thirty minutes, which I'm anticipating probably gonna need that for next week. Um, on this meeting, there's going to be the tax rates that you're gonna have to decide on, it's gonna be agenda item for the agenda. You have the tax worksheet, we'll get into more of the discussion on that in front of you. On that tax rate, uh, workshop item and on the agenda item, you guys are gonna have to make a decision where we're going to, what rate we're gonna accept, uh, as far as the tax rate is concerned. You've, you've got basically a range that you can accept, um, without going into special hearings and such as that. Now, we will have a special hearing because we're required to by law on, uh, the date that you want to approve the tax rate for the city. And so that, the tax rate hearing will be next week, um, as the meeting is started. Um, the tax rates, if you look at the no new revenue tax rate form there, and we can discuss it in the detail, but, uh, basically you're looking at a, a range between your point one five eight four one nine versus your point one seven zero four nine seven. So that is the range that you have to discuss and, and approve, uh, with only special movement.
If we go higher than, uh, point one seven oh, we, we have to go through the hearings.
You have to go through the hearings, yes, absolutely. So, so next week is a really important one, but you will be making a final decision on those tax rates and, uh, we will have the public hearing. Uh, the county needs our figures as soon as possible, they need it before months in, which is why we can't have that actually, your, your decided amount before, uh, the twentieth of September when you're gonna finalize the budget. So going back to the, the actual schedule, Tuesday, September the seventh at six P M. we'll have a special hearing, uh, that is after the Labor Day, thank you, Morris, for pointing that out to me. Um, and that will be, in that, um, meeting, um, you're going to, we'll have a public hearing as far as the proposed budget and you're gonna be doing your final adjustments in that meeting financially. We go always the following meeting, the last meeting of the month is when you have to approve the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two. Um, the rough numbers are in front of you, uh, and what we really need from you, and we can open up for any discussion, is, uh, as the council and the mayor, what capital expenses outside of the operating budget are you wanting to see, uh, considered this year? Um, the operating budget, if you look at the historic on that, last year, um, there was some projections that were really light. Um, I think some of those projections came into play because we didn't know what, uh, impact COVID nineteen was gonna have on the community and there were some areas, operation areas that were just, the projections just weren't correct. And so there's gonna be some normal, um, adjustments requested on those, but outside of that, the standard operations outside of capital and this twenty twenty two year budget will look a lot like the average budget we had with the exception of the adjustments that we need to do during the last three years.
I, I think we're, we have some confusion will be what we've already encumbered, some money aside, to what we want to for this year. And how do we tell the difference in how much more money? Like, if we've already encumbered hundred thousand dollars for a project and we have that project plus another project and it's another hundred thousand, I think this is the steps we don't need to make, make a word of.
Yes, and I'd like to go ahead and start out by a brief discussion on encumbered funds. Okay. Encumbered fund is, is basically money that we don't use in one budgetary year, it's carried over to the next budgetary year.
Automatically carried over?
No, it's automatically carried over when that we did use it, so it goes to the general revenue of the city. So that money just goes into the bank, it's a bank deposit. Former city secretary used to keep a spreadsheet on encumbered funds. And that spreadsheet was basically just an informational that says, and I'll use the police department for an instance, if we didn't spend fifty thousand dollars in the police department that we had budgeted, she would encumber that fifty thousand dollars in the police department for future use. When you, when you say, okay, well, how much money do we have in encumbered funds of the bank? We have no money in the bank in encumbered funds. There is no special account for encumbered funds, that just goes to the excess revenue that you have in city operational expenses. So if you look at our city's bank account right now, and I couldn't pull you exactly where we're sitting revenue wise, but it's a little over four million dollars, four point one, one, two million, say, uh, all that is, is in, in that amount, is those amounts that were encumbered and not used. It all goes into the general fund of the, the city. So, yes.
One question, would you define what encumbered means?
It's, it's, it's basically monies that were budgeted and not used that were carried over into the, the revenue.
Okay, thank you. So the answer to my question is we have, we need to re-encumber them for the next year.
If you don't use the funds during the budget, budgeted year that, that say a capital expense project, um, takes place, then that money that you don't use just goes back into the general funds of the city and you can rebudget it for the next year.
Right.
But there, but there is no secret, uh, account or anything else, an excess account, emergency account, or anything like that that has those funds in it. Uh, so every year, that any time that you don't spend money that you budgeted, that goes obviously to the city's general revenue. Any other ones?
No slush fund.
No slush fund? Exactly, no slush.
The, uh... Back to this, uh, no new revenue tax rate. Just to get a head, head start on that, I think everybody should, we should consider the higher end just so we keep our, we have lots of expenses coming up that we need to be doing, right? And everyone knows and we're gonna be listing many of them out and, uh, I, I think that would, that would benefit us as a whole than to go with the lower range and, uh, and then, and then be needing it in a year or two.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind?
Yes, please.
I would like Debbie to tell you what the difference in those two or monetarily, if you don't mind.
Which document should we be looking at?
Uh, that would be...
This is, this is your worksheet, this is what...
Which one?
This is what Gallison County sent for us to figure out what these numbers are gonna
be.
And we have, we're just going to back it, okay?
You basically have, if you don't wanna have a public hearing and have citizens vote and, and do all that, you go to the very last page of your worksheet.
There you go.
All right? This is what the Alston County is wanting signed in return on which two of these rates you have elected to set your tax rate at, okay? If you look at it, even the higher of the two are still lower than what your tax rate was last year.
Correct.
Okay? So you are gaining a little more revenue, probably if you go with the voters approved rate, you're gonna get about forty-three thousand additional in revenue, okay? But as far as the actual setting the rate, it's actually still less than last year. The other rate is gonna be just a little bit less of, of what your revenue was last year, because if you look, that rate is one point five, or point one five, we're still saying one point eight, so it's a little less.
So sixteen thousand dollars?
Yes, approximately sixty million.
Uh, three twenty-five is, is what you would be losing off the last year revenue, considering...
Versus the fifteen versus the seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and then with the, with the seventeen oh four nine, you're gaining forty-three thousand.
Approximately forty-three thousand.
Fifty-four thirty-three, right?
Correct.
Now, you, the city has a lot of new construction out there, if you look at your worksheets and, you know, on the, on one of those pages, you got a little over five million dollars that you can't quite patch yet because it's not complete. So once it's there, then you can tax it, so you'll see as the years go, it'll be a little different, but that's, that's pretty much what the counties give us to, to work with.
Yes, ma'am.
They'll have to, the agenda Jones, one six six one two, Curly?
You did it.
I did it, okay. Anyway, I wanted to find out on the average house, say the home is two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand, uh, what would that make the increase for the taxes be about?
You're not increasing at all, you're actually decreasing by a very small measure.
Very small. But how can you be decreasing if you're increasing the cash?
Is it lower than it was last year?
Because it's, because the rate is lower than last year.
But that's not an increase.
No, we're increasing profits from it.
Because the values of the properties have...
The value of the property has gone up.
Oh, wow.
So, so for this, just like the taxes, the county's, uh, profiting when the, when the values go up, then our tax basis, we're profiting as well.
Oh, okay, so that's going down, but we're getting more revenue.
Obviously, the homeowner's biggest hit on this is when your appraised value or your home goes up a lot, then you're having to pay more taxes, but the tax percentage is not changing section.
Okay.
But also, everyone needs to also understand, in today's market, everything is more, inflation is going crazy, so that increase is really gonna be minimal.
I already bring you a, I already bring you a comparison of some of the other tax rates. That's what they really, really love.
What, um, approved tax rate are we currently on?
Um, point one eight six one eight one, that's what it is right now.
One.
One eight six one eight one.
Okay, so that's what we're currently...
That's what we're on.
Operating on now.
Correct.
Now, if we were to adopt the others, they're substantially lower. So either way, our adopted tax rate would be less than what we're functioning on today.
Correct.
So even though Gallison County raised everybody's appraisal rates, we'd be low, we'd be justified by lowering our tax rate to equal out, okay? And I believe last year we lowered our tax rate as well.
Yes, sir.
So that's gonna be two years in a row, we're gonna adopt a lower tax rate.
That's right.
Well, we have a lot of projects we've got to get caught up on as a city with infrastructure and stuff, and without trying to get it, you know, a bond or anything or any additional tax, taxes, that's where my main thinking is, is to keep our property values and when we flush the toilet, make sure it's working and we turn the water on.
Yes, sir. So as, as you see the functionality, uh, when it goes to the general line by line and, and Debbie did a, another excellent, um, uh, job in putting, if you look at this document, the fiscal, fiscal year budget, if you would go down each page of this, what you'll see, and Debbie can explain to you anything that she knew, this is, this is gonna be, uh, the, the council's homework assignment if he's willing, uh, in each one of these areas, she has made a notation of the change that is probably gonna need to be requested or we will be requesting in each one of these line items. So, eh, just for, for an example, if you go to the, uh, police department, which would be... one, two, three, four, five pages from the back, you'll see, uh, the, the vehicle M and R. Uh, that was, if you look at the, the three-year history on that, that was at five thousand dollars. Well, last year, uh, the city administrator, um, reduced that by half, so that would be increased again. Uh, if you look at PD gasoline, uh, the historical average on that was seventeen thousand, it's been reduced by four thousand and there'll be a two thousand dollar increase, it says seventeen K there, but actually looking at the historic, as far as usage, we only need to raise that two thousand, not four thousand. Uh, so in each one of these areas, that was the first, the, these areas need to be at least looked at deeper to decide what type of adjustment, if any, that you guys would consider in each one of these areas, in each one of the departments, in each line by line category, uh, of the budget itself.
And then if you would, I'm actually trying to put it, why I said to raise those, if you'll look at your current year budget versus actual, if you'll see, if you look at those line items that I addressed, even like Brad's talking about in his PD gas line, if you flip over to the PD gas line, um... He's got that thirteen thousand dollar budget, but he's already pulled almost eleven thousand in that budget, so.
So that was gonna come in, while we're a little over, it's gonna come in close, because... But when we look at the historical averages, uh, guys, to set this stuff realistic is, you gotta look at more than what we did last year and even more than what we did the year before. I think a three-year average comparison to most everything that we do is a, a pretty good standard, it's more general operating.
Also, gas is a buck more.
Gas is a, gas costs more.
Thirty percent, please.
Hire's cost more. Labor is, we're getting hit with labor that we didn't have before, and that's in, in all areas of what we're doing. Uh, today, we, we paid for our asphalt and such and, and as some of you folks in the construction trade know, that all that stuff is going on, so, uh, everything that we know we cost more than we did last year in the year before is great.
Very, very, very.
Actually, is this online or the numbers are live?
Uh, they, they will be, when we, when we get a, a rough proposal, uh, they will be going online.
Will that be before the meeting in September?
Before, so you can use it before the meeting, yes.
Okay. Every one of them that has the insurance, the rainstorm, the flood and all that.
All of them.
Every one of them that need to be adjusted.
I see lots of raises, I don't see any lowers.
Yeah, there's, 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 there's very few lowers.
And if I look over there on, uh, under non-budgeted items, you'll see that we've already spent sixty thousand in the non, in the tax court costs, that's paying the stay between everybody for that. That's gonna run you seventy or eighty thousand a year, because she has to pay the stay.
Now, that's, that's some of these things Debbie is finding that we were, we were very delinquent.
How was it, how was it getting paid if it was non-budgeted? Because it's been getting paid, we've been paying our, our tax.
Yes, it'd be that sixty thousand saying that it's not budgeted, that it's just taking it out of your revenue.
So, so the, there's no budget that was levied in that area, we, we've been spending it, but we didn't set up an operating budget for a, a projected number.
But we had a balanced budget at the end of the fiscal years.
Well...
Did you pull from somewhere else?
That's, we, every year we have zero balance budgets and, and, uh...
Now, let me, let me kind of give you a flip side of that. If you look at the very first page of your revenue page, you see non-budgeted revenue? You see their tax court fines? You've got fifty-seven thousand sitting there that's not been budgeted. It either needs to go over here in your court revenue, you know?
Thanks, Curtis.
Can you see what I'm saying?
And, and you can see every year, um, when you guys, you know, and there has to be some moving, but there's been, I don't like to use the word "co-mingling" because that sounds really ugly, but we have moved line item categories around so much it's not clean, it's not visible, and it confuses CPAs, okay? So that's gotta stop. And, and so to move six line items over to this line and make it zero budget out, that's just not a good idea, I don't, no matter where you're from.
Yes, John?
And also in your budget thing, I put in, uh...
Yeah, which?
I put in your retirement contributions for this... Oh, I, it's in your packet under the, under my...
I don't know that they're...
If this is your retirement, I figured everybody's retirement that you're on the budget for this previous coming year, your insurance, salaries, if you do anything there. I just kinda put it up there so you can look at it.
I get this one.
You decide to determine.
That's right.
We'll put these on the wall at home and try to go in the twenty.
Kinda get your budget stuff together and then your tax thing together.
I know they're good numbers, Debbie.
They're trying, and then, you know, we have...
I see what you're doing.
Ma'am? Okay, my main focal point this budgetary year is going to be on our infrastructure, okay? I know we had monies allocated and projects going the last couple of years that haven't been completed, but when I'm looking at this budget forecast, and I haven't gotten into this because I'd like to, but I don't see any raises in infrastructure. I see a ton on PD, but my question for the next couple of weeks is going to be, what ongoing projects are we still budgeted for, where do we stand for them, where is our M and R going to be? That's where I think our focal point really needs to be, is infrastructure. So I'd like everybody to dive into that and I need help with it.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Picking back like a specific example, maybe you can help us out, like one of them that was on my mind that we definitely approved last year, even though we were thinning out the budget, was cleaning out our drainage ditches and we have made no movement on it. Are we still budgeted to move forward or something like that that was a question?
Yes, ma'am, you have five thousand dollars in funds for, uh, diversionary ditches. I'm not sure that that was probably enough money, I did run up the diversionary ditches, however...
It's becoming a jungle by the day.
Uh, you have those a much, much...
Okay. These, these, the, that money is there that you budgeted for, it's just never been spent. Okay.
I realize that, but I wanna make sure, I know it's there and it hasn't been spent, but I wanna make sure that not only we have that money to spend it, but now we're in another fiscal year, do we need to add funds to it? Where are we at with our projects? What can we get? At the end of this budget session, I do not wanna be short with our infrastructure fund. I don't wanna hear, we'll lead a budget for that. I think our city needs to focus on our charter. I really do. From what you said before, I'm gonna try to flush, I wanna make sure the citizens can drive down the river, and I've seen the condition and it needs our attention. I believe that's a priority in the city and for this council.
Did that affect? So, so what are you looking for in, in terms of, in other words, what, what I'm hearing you saying is that, you look at this budget, I haven't gotten into it, Eva, I need some help too, but I do understand it. When you look at this budget and you don't see those projects listed, and you don't see how much is committed, right?
Correct.
And that's what we need.
Correct, that's right.
In other words, we have, we need, we need to list these projects out, give them a cost code, list them underneath, what do you, municipal projects, any heading you, you guys want. List them underneath there, list them out, give them a cost code, let's see what we spent on now, project to finish and put it in the budget this year next year. But until you identify them formally like that, you really won't know.
Uh, I'll run to that effect. Uh, we're, we're doing that now, as a matter of fact, the next meeting, you're gonna have a breakdown exactly of what you've, uh, committed to prior to this budget year.
Yeah.
Uh, where that money is coming from and where we have any lapses in those. I can already tell you it was three hundred and, close to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars y'all committed to, the council, excuse me, committed to, uh, for the road improvement project. That money was being removed from, uh, the water reserve. How, how, how that's justified, I don't know, not even questioning that.
No, I'm not questioning Eva, I'm just saying, once you did it properly identified, I'm not concerned about co-mingling funds, I'm not concerned about anything beyond just getting a good cost structure.
Yes, sir.
Where you actually say what we're gonna spend, you know, and it has real, real words on what the money's gonna be spent on. And then you find it, I mean, a lot of things have happened, obviously.
Yes.
So what?
Uh, so, so what you're gonna have for this next Monday's meeting is that's one of those things that we will see very clearly in that, here's the road improvement project, this is the status of that road improvement project, which by the way is, it's in the bidding process, it should be out of the bidding process this month, where they should have an award on it, uh, that will come to us, you guys have to make a decision if this is a commitment that you wanna still stay with, if you do, then it will go to the commissioners' court and be awarded because that's what the county bought money, and then if all of that... And then if all of that goes, uh, according to the flow, then we should break ground in that project in the month of October of this year.
Uh, this project, I thought you brought it up, you mentioned to me that you did not think that our, how can I put this? That our allocation of funds for our road assessment, you, you didn't agree with it a hundred percent. Do we need to reuse that?
Yes, sir.
You didn't reuse any one of them.
Yeah, yes, sir, that's, that's, that's one of the things, like in, for instance, using that one as an example. Uh, the great thing about that program is we're, we're getting matching county bond money. So, we're getting, um, a lot, a lot more bang for the buck when it comes to that. But the truth is, we've got some other projects that I've yet to find where the money has already been allocated. Now, we have money as a city folks to do every one of these capital investment projects. Trust me on that, we have four, uh, four million plus dollars in reserve with the banking operating at less than two. So, there's monies out there.
We'd be good stewards of money.
Yes, but so, so, do you spend, and this is a, this is well above my pay grade. Do you spend three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of Jamaica Beach residents taxpayer's money to overlay some streets? And then not fund something we needed the sewer treatment plant? And then try to find funds for this five-year water replacement program that I think is very important? Because we're still probably short of that, almost half a million dollars. We paid for engineering, we paid for phase one, we of course we paid for phase two, but we still gotta phase three, four, and five that hadn't been paid for yet. And so, what's more important, to have a smooth street or to have water when you turn on the shower? So this is some of the, the major decisions that this council is gonna have to look at, and you will see it a lot more clearly on this next meeting, the budgetary meeting. When you see what has been, uh, committed to and what has not been committed to. I have stopped the rollout of the bidding process for the wa- water replacement program until you guys can make a decision what you wanna do, when you wanna do it.
Yeah, priorities and timelines.
And, and, and folks, we got another issue, it's called the sewer treatment plant. There's three quarters of a million dollars, up to three quarters of a million dollars, that we're gonna probably have to find if you want to get into operation the second half of that plant. Now, how important is that? It's not important at all today. But we get eighteen inches of rain at one time, and it's gonna get a lot more important. And, and this is the things that need to be considered. And these are the things that when you look at capital investment projects, um, invest on water. Invest on when you flush the toilet, that it goes the right direction. Those are very, very important things. Now, I'm not, I'm not by any means knocking the road improvement project. And it is needed in certain areas. We need to fix the diversionary ditch at, at Buccaneer, which was one of the things that it does with, with the wash amp there all the time. We need to improve that. We need to improve the roads in Beachcomber, we need to improve the roads in Pelican, we need to improve the roads on Jamaica Inn. Now, those are, but there's, there are a whole lot of other roads that are wid- widening by a foot. So what? And there's not even pothouses in those roads. So, and again, I, I don't mean to make light of it, that's, that's a, 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 a great project, but it's, it's, it's not a critical project like the other things that you guys need to consider. And so, you'll see where, that, the stuff that y'all have already voted on, where that money was actually coming from, instead of just us coming from a reserve account. Everything comes from a reserve account when you look at capital expenditure.
All of these are huge, the ones you're discussing. Not all of them, of course, flushing the toilets is visible to the public, but not all of them are obvious to the public. The septic system, the water, the, uh, roads are pretty obvious, but the infrastructure isn't. We had a dozen or so projects identified, uh, several years ago, five years ago, you sent them to me. That some of those are very visible to the public, and probably not half a million dollar projects. So, I would like to encourage you to go back and glance over those as well. So maybe some of those like signage on the streets, um, some of the cameras that people had talked about. Some of the things that the citizens complain about that are less expensive, maybe can also be included.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Terry, and what you're talking about is all in these pages I have here, we are gonna be discussing.
I mean, I know about.
This goes back for five years, and, and so it's smaller.
Yeah, so.
But you know, we have still, um, I mean, a small one could be the replacement of playground equipment, I know we need, that needs to be done. Uh, but also we have replacement farmhouses. How many were there?
There, there are five that are critical and up to seven that need to be replaced.
I heard there's twenty-five out of service.
Twenty-five out of service?
Twenty-five.
Do we have twenty-five?
That's great.
Say again?
How many do we have?
I don't know, there's actually, the chief turned in a document a while ago, says the previous city administrator with a list of all of them. I was hoping that you could still find that, he doesn't want to have to go through and do it again.
There, there were only seven that were identified.
Okay, so we got seven that need to be repaired, and usually every bus, every fiscal budget year, the chief asks for like two new hydrants installed, cause we're short around here. So what hydrants got brought up, cause that's another huge one.
Well, and, and to that effect, that's why the water line projects also important, because not gonna do any good with a fancy new hydrant if you don't have water going through it.
Right, it's like Terry said, you know, we, the rest is a give and take, of something people can also see, but also to make our living, to, to make the, our living easier.
And if you don't mind, you brought up a thing that I'm actually, again, next meeting, you're gonna see the, the variations of the policy. When, as, as everyone knows, there's a lot of street signs that are now killed away and faded and such as that. And so the mayor brought up an idea, while we're looking at that, why don't we look at replacing all the street signs with a nicer version? A deeper color with a city logo on it beside the street name, that kind of thing, and compare that to just the replacement sign that it's, uh, a lot of times that we've, we have replaced items with the cheapest version available. And, and if it, if it wears out in two years, if you, you know, you do sometimes actually get what you paid for. And so, um, that is one of the things that you're gonna see, a cost comparison in those two, it's a small capital, but it's still capital. And, uh, honestly, some of this stuff is, um, you are still within the operating budget to do. We don't even have to find creative funds for a large percentage of that is.
We had twenty-five K last year in fire hydrants, we didn't spend any of it, I wanna say we had five K in street signage, I know we spent some, but we didn't spend the majority.
You still probably got ten or so thousand there that, that hadn't been done.
And something else, and well, those street signs really just makes it look like we care about the way our city looks. I mean, it's basically the lipstick, it's like, we put that up there, and they're all uniform, and they're all reflective for our officers, and, yeah.
Visible at night.
It is well. I like the old ones too, but, I mean, you could put a new one up also, like the old concrete or historic ones are pretty cool. But you would also addition half the nice reflective.
Did the city do the dead end streets in the last three, four months?
We're, we're, I've got an order right now for two of the streets. Yeah, we, we, we've done, we've done them, a lot of the signs were stolen, uh, some of them have worn out. Uh, but right now, I've had to order three more for replacements.
Yeah, I've seen some new ones, I thought the city might have done.
You know, but we, we haven't replaced a few, we're getting ready to replace some more.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm not real up on what hot tax can pay, but this is something that helps, uh, the community, those that have rentals and stuff.
They, they take a percent.
They do, okay, that's what I was asking. We can, okay, we need to. Yeah, okay, that was my question.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to point out, last week my daughter was in town, and one of the things that she commented about at the rental was the fact that the water pressure was so low, even though it's not visible, because most of us are probably have grown accustomed to the low water pressure, cause I was like, oh, I don't have any problems, and she was like, and, uh, so, I mean, just because it's not visible doesn't, lets not.
Exactly. And that, that, that final line is we're, we five will be definitely paying attention, or six, I'm sorry, uh, in the, those five have been.
One other question is, do you know how many street signs we're talking about in Jamaica Beach? As far as, you know, Buccaneer and Edward Teach and.
Every, every one of them's who we're looking.
I know, but how many?
A bunch.
Okay, that narrows it down.
Every street has two signs on it, if you think about it that way, every street has two signs.
I mean, if you go down, uh, not Buccaneers, but, uh, from Mahama Way, there's only one.
There's only one.
Cause one of them is a day.
Yes, yeah, so, I mean, that's why I was saying, and some of them, like, uh, Edward Teach actually has four, or three. Three, so I, I was just.
See, on Buccaneer, they're only on the east side. They're not on the west side of the street, so unless you have them memorized, if it's dark.
Yeah.
Try to look.
Back on the water line replacement, wasn't it a three-part project, please remind me, and isn't phase one completed?
Phase one is totally completed, yes. Phase two is partially completed. Now, three more phases is a five-year project, so it's basically five phases.
Is stage two underway? Is there physically doing it?
Yeah, we, we, so, stage one and stage two is completed. Stage three, four, and five have been engineered, but no work has been done on any of them. So we, we've only got two loops done.
And you said you put those on hold just to re?
We, we've, we've, we've put the bidding process, I know the engineering firm is ready to send out to bid for the next phase. And I'll just put the brokes on it too, you guys can decide what you wanna do.
Yeah.
And, and what we're gonna, what we're gonna get up first.
Didn't we have prices already, or just?
Yes, sir.
Said we didn't like the prices we had on those stages, so.
No, sir, it's just that we, we don't know where the funding is.
Yeah, we haven't made some ready money.
You, you guys gotta make a decision.
They should read the money.
Yeah, yes, sir, because we, we wanna make sure that, there, there was no clean, there was no accounts created. And what you, you brought up a great idea a while ago, did it on a capital improvement project, you need to have a line item category and, and how you're gonna fund that, we don't now, it's just like.
Oh, good enough, I understand that.
We can create.
Any other items on?
I have one question.
Sir?
I have one question. When you're talking about the ditch, are you talking about the ditch that goes from Edward Teach up past the pool and out to the, to the, uh, state park? Or are you talking about the ditch along Buccaneer, or the, the one that goes in front of my house?
The, the, I, I'm looking at the diversionary, which is, which is mentioned, but I'd also like to see about drainage through the whole community. And they have to come out and shoot gray and dig, dig her out. But that's gonna be a major.
Oh, yeah.
Deal, because we've got people pour concrete over drains, so.
Yeah, they dug them all really nice about six, seven years ago, maybe.
Probably go longer than that.
But at the same time, we're gonna have to, you know, that's gonna be a maintenance thing, and, and that's gonna be one of our next few items that we're gonna be talking about in, in here.
Just when they get listed out.
Yeah, it gets, gets started at zero.
So any, any other?
You can't do anything until you do that.
I know.
Any other budget related?
Wait, we have to be a twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-three.
Do you wanna have a person say anything, so you know?
Just from down, you.
So anybody that wants to see any capital projects done, whether it be a two thousand dollar project, or a twenty thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollar project, just send that to me, we'll work it in to the worksheet on the proposal that you guys will see for the next meeting.
So like the playground replacement, the football court, so like.
And, and anything that you need pricing on any of that, if you don't have pricing, get with me and we'll, we can get some rough pricing now.
Oh, and a over budget for sure. I'm not gonna under budget that.
You know, we, we're not sending out RFPs or anything right now, but we at least will have all.
The money for it, to get the law rolling.
Yes.
Great thing.
You think you have that by the, by this early meeting, um, before the, uh, the sixteenth?
We'll, we'll have.
That lives.
Well, as far as the projects are concerned?
Yeah.
We'll have that done for this next meeting on Monday.
So everybody needs to get to it.
That's what I'm saying, the, the council and everyone.
Right, so anything that y'all wanna also consider, uh, get to me and then we'll put it on the list.
Let's try to prioritize, let's not go off that cup there.
Well, once we get it listed, then we can do some critical analysis and prioritize.
Sir?
As a citizen, if I had something that I would want to suggest to be added into the budget, who would I? When, and who would I bring that up with?
That's, uh, that's a great question, actually, we, we released on our Facebook and website page today, um, about the call, the end of the budget meetings. And, and we also said if any citizen wants to request anything, just send me an email, and we'll get it on that list.
Okay, all right.
I, I volunteer for that too, if anybody would wanna volunteer, would wanna email me for a suggestion, that would be great.
Okay, the one I had in mind was the S one eight, there are several that are dead. And I know that in the years past, when, you know, we were talking about putting the turtle in that, you know, well, that's not in the budget, we'll have to wait until the next year before we can take a tree down, and, uh, but I mean, I noticed now there's three or four. And that would be a, a project, as far as a replacement, that I think JBIC would seriously consider in helping with the cost of replacing. But, uh, you know, if you don't cut it down to where you could replace where it was, then we gotta move all the electricity, electrical lights and everything, so.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be here in just a moment, we're gonna be talking a lot about working closer with JBIC.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to discussion number two, it's, uh, new standards, operating procedures for the city.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, everybody got some of the, the sections. Uh, that would be part of the standard operating procedures for the city. Uh, you should have got the personnel policies, the personnel handbook, the policy, the cure not policy. And, uh, and so we can start taking, uh, these and then looking at a number more depth and answering questions for, uh, for those. Uh, there was a amendment to the personnel policy called the code of conduct, and it was, it is an amendment for the personnel policy. And, uh, then we're gonna talk a little bit more also about the organization, because that's also part of the S of D. And, uh, the form that we're gonna develop now. So, I don't know if anyone's had an opportunity to review the documents that I've sent, or have any questions since then.
I thought we were gonna have them printed out for a report copy tonight.
Okay, oh, um, so sorry.
I didn't know, I thought.
Yeah, um, my bad, I, I really.
We'll get them all together and we'll pack it on Monday.
We'll.
I was just using city's paper instead of my own.
Yeah, no, 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 that, that, uh.
That got on our computer.
Yeah, you should, you should have, I should have provided that for you, my apologies. Uh, and I will get those to you if you'd like, we can deliver, I guess, to you before, and then be more likely as well.
Well, basically, looking at the, uh, the employee handbook.
Yes.
It looks to be the same as we saw what was in April.
Correct.
Cause I printed that out and I compared, there, there are a couple of them. Because I printed that out, and I compared, there, there are a couple of model, a couple of things you guys added.
Yes, sir, and there, those, those are items...
There were only two things that I saw.
There, there, there's a couple of items in there, uh, that, to me, are, are more important than the, uh... The employees of the city currently accrued vacation time by this time of work.
Yeah, I saw that.
And, and they can carry over unused vacation time, up until, uh, we've never had a ceiling set on the, uh, how the vacation time you can accrue, so theoretically, if someone worked there ten years, they accrue a whole lot of hours to get paid in the city. Uh, in the policy and procedure under this, we've, we've now set some of those ceilings, if you would, one ceiling was set that wasn't there before, which is the three hundred and twenty foot, three hundred and twenty hour ceiling that we have. Another one of the areas that was set before, but we've changed it, the underway, and that is, uh, actually accrued, uh, leave time, long-term leave time. Uh, the city, according to the standard policy, you could, you could use the, uh, unused and accrued long-term leave time at the ceiling of one thousand and forty hours, uh, that one, I actually raised the four, uh, fourteen hundred and forty hours. The reason for that is, if you look at the standards from the time that that was actually input in the policy and procedure, and what the standards, the labor force standards are, that's just the average labor force standard of fourteen forty, and that's mine, that, that number that's used. So theoretically, if one of our employees, um, got various, term leave, or, uh, something like that, they would actually be paid for that time off, uh, if, if obviously that they haven't used it. So, that is a benefit, obviously, to the employees, and, uh, it doesn't really relate to on-the-job injury, because that's a completely different classification, workers' compensation. Are those the two major areas changed?
Gil, you said that you reviewed this one, as opposed to the one that we were given in April, and you didn't see many changes?
I saw a bit many changes, actually.
Okay.
But, and I just sort of yellowed in some of, but I didn't have enough time to, I just gave it a quick over, and one of my C is a, we've changed the hiring authority, and we've added the mayor and City Council, before which is City Council, I think it's a good idea to have the mayor in there, okay? I really do, it's done.
Excuse me, Russell, I had shared, I had shared the history of S O P with Gil.
Yeah, I'm quite aware of it.
A few copies.
I understand you two guys really developed this, right?
No, no, what we developed was, um, deemed unworthy and cost.
Excuse me?
The one we worked so hard and diligently on, that was submitted to us in April for our approval, Brad, um, thought it was, did not apply to us anymore, he wrote up this new one, is that stated correctly?
Um, it's semi-perfect.
Semi-perfect?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there is underlying trauma in my voice, because I was disappointed about our hard work, not giving it.
I, 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 I get it, I think we sort of say things best to your, but, um, regardless, it is what it is.
Will you compare the previous one with whatever you're holding in your hand?
Actually, I did, it's I...
And see what you think?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see, I do see one thing in here that I, I couldn't figure out at all. To make sure I've got it.
It's no secret Brad knows that, I know, I think that he doesn't like committees, he likes to do things himself.
I wouldn't say that, I mean, we, we jointly meet quite often.
Without question.
Sir?
Um, and that's a good thing. You know, it is business first. Here's the one that Brad, the one that you've added here on Personnel Records. And it says here, police personnel records must be maintained by the Chief of Police and kept separate from other personnel, I guess, personnel files.
Yes.
In a locked file or locked office.
Yes.
I guess that's...
That's the law.
Yeah. Thank God.
Yeah, that's, that's the law.
That's a good thing, okay, because it wasn't in there before.
Right, right, correct, there, there, there were some things, and, and I'll go on the record and say this, and, and my apologies to, uh...
It's okay, it's...
Alderman, the first, my apologies, I, I know that you and, and I mentioned, uh, former Alderman Wizzo spent countless hours on a policy and procedure manual that was handed over during the Hutchinson administration. This policy and procedure manual was taken from the city of Mount Vernon, Texas, and it was used word for word, except exchanging Jamaica Beach from Mount Vernon and a couple other areas that were changing.
Brad, that is incorrect.
I've got the...
The committee began before Sean Fane was ever mentioned.
I, I'm, I'm speaking of the last one that you guys had to review.
Uh, no, we started way back when John Brick was here, he was on the committee, so, I don't...
What we're trying to do now is, we're gonna try, we're gonna keep moving forward, and, uh, regardless, just put the best one together we can.
Well, have job descriptions would be nice as well.
Yes.
And we're measuring, fit some as a...
That's part of it, yeah.
Well, basically, you know, this looks like a good document.
Just be sure you're C Y A, that's all.
This, this document, one of the reasons that I picked it is, it's very simple.
Yeah.
And when you get into a litigation situation in an employment law case, if you have volumes of personnel policy, the very, one of the very key first questions that will be asked is, are you required to read the policy and procedure manual when you're hired with the, the organization? Yes, we are, did you, are you telling me that you've read eighty-five pages of documents, and you understood all of them before you signed that paper fifteen minutes later, after it was given to you? In every case, that is, those employment documents, by law, by the hundreds of employment law cases that I have reviewed, that is a situation that it leaves the city or organization with gross liability, because there is rhyme and reason about most of the stuff that I do, and it's based on law and liabilities that oppose the city. In a document that is short, sweet, clean, and to the point, that covers all needed area, that is always the better version to go with when it comes down to the individual employees and do they understand?
I definitely agree, but you have been a participant, uh, us working on that, I've seen it for years.
Keep on doing it.
Yes, the, uh, I would just ask one thing, are we gonna have a employee, uh, breakdown of what their job is responsible for?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir, as a matter of fact, um, each one of the positions that we have, we have a job description for that position. The next area besides, uh, policy and procedure, procurement plan, those kind of things that would be sent for review, um, there are two organizational charts in the handout that I gave you. If you would look at the first one, Attachment A, that is the current administration that we're under right now.
Yeah, and I wanna, I wanna address that before we get too much further with that, is, uh, you know, we were just talking about all these projects we're wanting to do, we've always had a lot of projects, how successful have we been at getting those completed? Well, this, the second, Attachment B, gives us more people for the same amount of money. That's the main difference between the two, in, instead of having one person, regardless who it is, as a city administrator, trying to juggle all these projects, is we are spreading that, those functions out. Just a quick story, when I first started my business, I had some, some hard lessons to learn. I thought I could do everything, I thought I could design, I thought I could be the project manager, I thought I could be the salesman, I thought I could do it all. And I pulled my hair out consistently, I was not very productive, but once I hired a project manager, like, things got a little easier, I got a little, I went, the sales or my revenue started increasing, and then I added a salesman to help with the things, my revenue got a little higher, my production got a little higher, went from building ten homes to twenty homes for twenty projects, um, you know, it was all about just letting go, for me personally, it was about letting go of some of that and trusting other people to do it, with us here at the city, it's just divvying out some of the responsibilities, and that's why I'm, I'm in favor of the Attachment B, because we start divvying out responsibilities that need to be done, because the way we're doing it just has not been working.
We don't have those, so what are you referring to?
Uh, well, we'll get them to you, we'll get them to you soon.
If we could get these TVs working, we could see what you're talking about, and you might get more people coming to the meeting.
They're on the, uh, they're on the website, and the city...
I know, but we would like to see what they're talking about here.
Are they on the city website, on the agenda packet?
These, they haven't been added yet.
No.
These are...
It says agenda packet, and this is all that's on there. And I'm just saying, if we had the TVs working, we could be more understanding of what y'all are talking about, and I've been asking for a couple of years now.
Yes, and, and I've got that to address here in just a moment.
Thank you.
With, with future business coming, um, as you can see, and we'll get this out, um, I'm with Brad, you go ahead, and then I'll follow him.
Yes, as, as you all know what the current structure is, you have a city administrator that is, uh, that is responsible for pretty much the entire city operation, uh, and you have department heads that report to the city administrator, which would be the city secretary and chief of police. Uh, on the organizational chart, as you see, uh, public works supervisor, right now, public works, as you well know, is a third-party, uh, contracted person, so, the consideration, one of the considerations you guys will be, um, actually looking at this year is bringing public works in-house.
That's physical, yes.
Yes, and you'll have more information on that as well, I'm on it, uh, currently, it's off the top of my head, we paid a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to U S W, we're straight out jobs, not including any type of construction when they do the funeral services for the baccos and, and those kind of things.
They pay you stepers for the...
Oh, they, they, they do, they do, uh, so, uh, basically, if we had a in-house supervisor, how much would we have to pay, uh, he or she, uh, to be the supervisor for us? I, I'm thinking that even with a, a pretty nice benefit package and everything else, we're gonna be saving money off of that hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, so, that's on there in anticipation that that position would be, uh, brought back in-house. And then, obviously, reporting up to the department heads, you have the clerks in the city, reporting to the city secretary, the police department code enforcement, reporting to the police chief, and obviously, the maintenance employee would be the grass cutter, sign erector, and, and part-time water helper when it comes to the public works. If you look over at Attachment B, the proposed change, you see that you have eliminated the city administrator position, it says city administrators, director of finance, city administrator, director of operations. Basically, you're creating two super department heads, it's director of finance, director of operations.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the city secretary?
The city secretary is the director of finance.
So, it'd be city administrator, director of finance, slash secretary?
Well, it's, it's, it would be director of finance, city secretary, that's correct. And, and depending on whoever would be in the city administrator's position, uh, depending on their expertise, you can customize that based on their expertise as well, like, if I was in that position, you might consider director of public safety and director of operations. If someone else came in, if you employed someone else that had, um, logistics expertise, whatever, uh, it would be director of, uh, operations. Reporting to them would be your department heads, so based on the Attachment B that proposed, you're taking, you're adding one additional full-time employee for the city, which right now, it'd be funding of the code enforcement person, and you're saving about forty-one thousand dollars over the other, uh, organization in the way it is currently now. So, you're, when you can add manpower and pay less money doing it, then you're going to create efficiency and decrease expenses.
Yes, ma'am, Jim.
Okay, we just put bids out for city administrator, is that reflecting this, or are we gonna have to put bids out again since it's changing? Well, still, city administrator, you're just elevating the secretary, aren't you?
Yeah, pretty much. You're, you're lowering the position for city administrator and elevating the position of city secretary.
And, like I said, you're doing it with the savings of roughly forty-one thousand dollars, um...
Now, that is, that is an upside, the, there is a downside, and the downside is, if you're going to reduce expenses in your payroll with this, um, you may be missing out on getting someone of a higher quality when it comes to city administrators, okay? Um, out of the seven applicants that we have received so far, one of the applicants said that they would not consider working for us for less than one hundred thousand dollars. So, and that is by far the most experienced applicant, as you probably imagine, um, so, those are still in the process, we're still reviewing those applications, and all that information will be turned over as soon as, uh, we're finished getting the applications in, and completing the backgrounds on, so that, that decision can be made. The structure as is, anyone can fill any of these positions.
Great.
Okay, now, uh, whether, whether Brad Hyman is the chief of police, or Brad Hyman is the, uh, director of operations, it, it doesn't matter. One of the seasoned folks that we have applying would be the director of operations, and Brad Hyman would be the police chief, so, this is about structure, folks, it's not just about personnel, it's about functionality, practicality, efficiency, and physically doing a smart thing. Again, the downfall, obviously, is, um, you're limiting some of the candidates that you get if your pay range is gonna be between seventy and eighty, seventy and ninety, that kind of thing. Now, not eliminating all of them, and sometimes people, uh, who are overpaid don't bear that money either, and we've seen that.
But also, if they have less responsibility?
If they have less responsibility?
They may be okay.
It, it, they could be okay, it just depends on the person.
Isn't it identical, other than who they report to?
Other than...
The secretary and the city manager equal, and then everybody else falls in place, right?
You, you have two directors instead of administrators, that's correct.
Yeah.
So, you're de-emphasizing the city administrator's role, and you're having a more clear, transparent job responsibility that's painted out there, and I think that that is one of the things in the, in the months that I've... And I think that that is one of the things, in the, in the months that I've filled the office across the way, I've seen a lot of things that we do that, that we need to do more. And one of them is, as a group, the city staff and this council and this mayor has to be on the same page, folks. I'm going to tell you that right now. That has to happen. I don't care who you have in the office next door. If we're not on the same page, if we're not going in the same direction, if we're not communicating with the same language, like again, I have, and I apologize, Mr. Mayor, okay, then it doesn't work. The, they, we got a beautiful new car without any wheels. It doesn't go anywhere. And so we have to do things better than we did in all aspects of what we did.
And, and that's what I'm, I'm trying to get to, is let's do it better and differently than what we've done before because what we've been doing hasn't been the most efficient one.
Absolutely.
I mean, yeah, it's kicked the can down the road, but I'm, I'm not here to do that. I'm here to make things get accomplished.
And, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. And I, I got a, even a step further that should be always considered when you're looking at this stuff, is we are coming around, thanks to you guys approving this stuff. We, we got that website now approved and that's, that's starting underway and, and with this thing, there's going to be a lot more clarity, information out there, transparency. And with the structure, it's going to be very clear to all the citizens and those who are in need of information to have that information at their disposal and not have to come search for it. And, and there's a beautiful tool on this thing that says, "How do I?" And under "How do I?", you can, you will put in anything you want. How do I get a, a permit to build a house? How do I pay my water bill? How do I anything? That's there. There is a clear organizational and job description of every employee that will be there. And so there will not, not be a question, who can, who can answer my question? Too many times, we had people coming up on the second, second floor, not knowing who to get an answer from. That, that shouldn't be the case. And so we are, we are moving in the right direction with a lot of the stuff that you guys have approved and, and, and you know, we're getting to the, still need to get to the functionality part of it. And so we need to continue, yes, ma'am.
When is it, the website's going to be, when is that looking at to be ready?
Well, hopefully.
Launched.
Ho- hopefully, hopefully, the mayor's next agenda item will clear up some of that stuff and, and we'll be announcing some liaisons. And so some of you will be very involved in that project. So, but the first phase, we've already done. We got a mock-up now, and so the next.
You got a video.
Yes, sir. And so, so we're looking, the original was about four months, so we're within that four month's time now. I'm, I'm hoping that that thing will be up and running, running within, between now and ninety-eight minutes. That, that is the target.
Do you have any applications for that maintenance employee position?
I have actually interviewing associates to more of the TWSC in Texas City.
One more.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding the city manager's position, and no matter what difference we might have right now, as I respect him tremendously, I'm not sure with as much as the city manager currently has on their plate, removing the finance is making it less. I mean, I'm almost seeing the job responsibility and the salary and everything being the same because there's so much that has happened.
Exactly. And that's what I was about to say, is you know, we, I mean, you think about the John Brim, and then you think about Sean, and then, you know, just the inundation, and they just get warped out.
And taking the finances out, they're still.
But also with the other reorganizations, let's say, you know, and I, I don't know how much it is, but I mean, all, every day, you get calls, and it's just call after call after call. Well, when we update the, not update, we, we take this, this phone system and get it, and these people in place, so somebody says, "Hey, I'm calling about, this needs to be mowed," or "We got a leak here." They can actually push the button, "Talk to the maintenance department," or "Talk to the water department." It doesn't have to go through Debbie, no one, the city administrator. That alone will give an hour a day, minimum, free of an hour a day. I mean, you start thinking, you start micromanaging those little details, I think we, we start making some headway.
You, uh, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mayor. And I will be sharing with the, uh, the city administrator's report for the meeting on Monday, is we have contracted a new phone service that is updating our, our old outdated phones to a very sophisticated phone system. And we're spending over a hundred and fifty dollars less than what we're paying a month for this one. So it was a, it was a no-brain move. We've already contracted with them, and their, their rollout will be soon, and like the mayor was saying, in a, in a typical day, one of the ladies lines to the phone, and somebody will have an issue, and they'll go into a twenty-minute explanation of what they need. And then that person will just send that phone call to me or send it to Debbie, and then they're going through another twenty minutes. So, and then by the time we give that person an answer, there's been an hour worth of city man hours spent on someone calling in where we could have done the same thing in less than half a night. And so, and it's just a lot more professional, it's a lot better quality. With the COVID-19 thing, these phone systems can be operating through your computers. And so if we had an outbreak where we had three employees that were quarantined, they can still do their work from home, you can send text messaging through the computer to someone's phone. You can do anything that you need to do, but it's pretty, pretty amazing.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All right, so coming back to the agenda item. Discussion on the new standard operating procedures. I, I ran the last one and didn't get anywhere, because one of council members, a couple council members volunteered to attack this. I really want to be working on the budget. Does anybody want to stand up and volunteer?
Yeah, volunteer. To work on the budget, is that it, or what?
No.
On the new.
All the SOPs?
SOPs, the, the procurement, all of it. Now? Okay, well, on that point, let me.
I mean, we're going to, because we're going to vote on it, so I think we're all.
Well, trying to work on it until, you know, is what you say.
The Monday?
And that.
You go through the.
Because we're voting on Monday, right? I've gone through what you sent me, those are the SOPs, that was the, the email that we got. That includes the.
Those, each one of those areas will be formulating the city SOPs.
Okay, SOP, can you tell me what SOP stands for?
Standard operating procedure.
Thank you. So I've gone through it pretty extensively and made some, um, I've already done it. So I'll be happy to do, if, but I would like somebody that I can call and, and ask questions. Who would I ask questions?
Me, please.
Okay.
And thank you for that.
On that point, a couple of items I want to bring up about these. We went from an eighty-seven-page document down to a twenty-three, twenty-five-page document. I just want council to be aware of that. And also, on the last couple of years, the changes I've seen on these is taking more and more responsibility or oversight from council and putting it onto the city administrator's title. So as you're reading through this, please look for that, and you can always revert back to the last one. Those are just some changes that I saw that caught my attention.
A non-copy of two thousand seventeen?
That is.
That was the last one?
No, that was not there.
That, that was the last revased copy. That one was never approved.
Two thousand nineteen was not approved.
Okay, okay. You're okay, like, you're okay.
But the two thousand nineteen would probably be a better guide than go by your.
And I have both copies. I have two thousand nineteen and two thousand seventeen.
Well, two thousand seventeen, do it, Russell.
Yes. Yes, that's the one I'm going to revert back to. On your questions or items, if you should, you could, could cheat sheet. I'd like to review them. I just don't want to dive into it diligently again. All right? I'd like to focus somewhere else this time. That's why I'm asking you to. I've reviewed it quickly, but not in detail. Done, for me.
Any other questions to the SOPs? I guess on item of business number three, discussion on mayor's assignments and liaisons. I go right back to kind of the reason that this, why I'm considering attachment B. I think what we've gotten into is we put too much on city staff. We were elected to do jobs other than just vote. We're here to bring the community together. We're here to make things happen and to give as much assistance to city staff and to the community. And with that being said, I'll pass these out. To this one, and I'll answer any questions right now. But I do want to make sure everybody understands what, what a liaison and a coordinator is. I think that's where a lot of problems happen, and we're trying to keep some from happening. A liaison basically is here to assist and to manage information between groups, and is proactive that the assignment is getting done and done effectively, effectively. A coordinator is a person that organizes events or activities and negotiates with others in order to ensure that they, the work is, they work together and work efficiently. You'll see, when we get there, your name and contact information will be posted with each assignment on the website when we get that going. What I'm, what we're doing is, because I have really, I have really expanded this to include other responsibilities, I have a, a primary person and a secondary person or a fellow alderman and/or myself to work as a team. So at least one team member can now make all the meetings while everyone on that team knows what's going on. And then we will be expecting to give updates at the city council meetings and update the city website. I ask for the liaisons and the coordinators to visit within the community to establish a board and, and/or a support team of volunteers for assignments where it's noted. The volunteers should have some expertise, knowledge, and/or desire to participate to help each alderman with the responsibilities and to do the best they can, to make, to make the beach even more efficient and promote community. I can say this, Marcy's, what she's been doing, there's a few additions to that. She has done such a great job at the parks, but there is a lot more that all filling together. But that's also why I want to help you, and I'd like Gil to help you. And we.
Got it.
We do it. City public, I'll start, city public service liaison handle, have regular meetings with city staff, code enforcement, maintenance department as needed, meetings with utility companies and county, state agencies. Their liaison departments will be street drainage, water sewer, planning and zoning, bulkhead and canals, utilities, meaning in all utility companies, beach maintenance, beach access, nourishment, and water erosion control liaison. They will be working with city staff, and that is Gil and Russell and myself. Water hearing officers, which. I don't, and just to fill you in, we, we, someone's had issues with the water department, and we need things taken care of, and you make that work. So Taz and Woody to do that. PD liaison, which involves scheduling, uh, schedule regular monthly meetings and establish a community watch group. It's going to be Russell and Woody. Fire department, schedule regular meetings with them, be Russell and Woody. EMS liaison, which will, you're on regular meetings. Something that I've added there was public health liaison. Just to kind of fill in what, what's happening with that, you know, like when we had the pandemic, you know, last summer. Just to kind of keep everybody updated with what's going on, and that's going to be Woody and Taz. JBIC liaison, which involves attending monthly meetings, will be Gil and Russell. And the reason, and then the other is Marcy, Gilbert, and myself. There's a lot that interchanges with public parks and JBIC liaison. So I'm trying to, to kind of keep them, where they're, where that network is, works well. Because the public parks includes the pool, wildlife, which I added, because I think we, we, we definitely have an issue with that. But not in a negative way, but we, there is, we need questions answered, and you're the expert.
Got it.
Park liaison, which we'd like to see a, a park board established, you know, and then figure out who can be the coordinators and help manage the community events and city events and JBIC events. A marine coordinator, just working with JBIC and park board. Bird sanctuaries, fishing parks, beautifications, which is rideways, flower beds, trees, entries, and working with JBIC and park board. And then, and there gets, I'd like to discuss, you know, if you have any more ideas, you know, some type of volunteers coordinator. It, it can be yourself, or it could be Gil, it could be somebody that y'all, y'all are according to that. Just a volunteers board, just somebody that, that really wants to be involved with that. City business liaison, which is regular meetings with city staff and researching, doing websites, and grant capital investments, and local business for partnering up with donations. That'd be Taz and myself. And SDR liaison, thank you, Rick. Let's move to my next item here. We've been visiting with an SDR collection company. It is very minimal. I want us to visit more about that because it, it's just above where we need to have a budgetary outline of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But the return on the investment is high. The way they work, and we will discuss, discuss those details later, but we're going to increase our collections astronomically. So the minimal seventeen thousand and some change, we're going to collect well more than that because of what they, in their system. That will be Woody and myself. Then we have the West End Galsen Island Property Owners Association, which they also call Woody, ho ya. Woody, ho ya, liaison. Everyone's welcome to go to that. I, you know, highly encourage, whoever can go, go to that, it's great. Jerry Mowen puts that on, and yeah, it's just, I went, I've been several times, and I, I just love it. The HGC rep, I mean, Taz and Marcy, there again, just let us know. I mean, I just, I know it's tough to get to. I mean, I did it for two years, but one year of it was COVID, and we didn't have to go much. So, you know, if, you know, welcome to, bring your spouses, whatever you'd like to do. There is, or, or follow it online. The other item, which is the Galveston Mayors and Councilmen's Association, which is all held in Galveston County. It's moved around. Everyone's on, including staff. And uh will be posted when those meetings are. We have a table. We just let them know. It's great food. They're also a great speaker. You get to meet everyone.
We have a roast up in one time.
I know. I, I, I'm trying to put it off as long as I can.
It'll turn around.
Yes, yes. I'm, I'm waiting for the, the phone call. Uh, and then emergency responsibilities. You, you can read that and see. The one thing I did, didn't mention was the mayoral responsibilities. We've been visiting. We've, we're trying to get a handle on the management. Not only the management of the city, but management of the emergency operations. You're welcome to look there. You know, we're gonna have a emergency operations center, emergency management plan, uh, a response team, and a community, a CER team, community emergency response team. My job is also gonna be financing budgets and management, uh, establishing, appointing, and changing liaisons and coordinator responsibilities as needed. Uh, public relations director, uh, I'll still be working with PD, the public safety liaison. Uh, city business liaison and the Galveston County mayor's rep. You see in the emergency responsibilities, uh, all that's listed there. The uh mayor pro temp, which I will be asking for that vote. Uh, this is my understanding, and I guess there is to be a vote on that. We'll be bringing that up next meeting. And I'm asking Russell to, to be the mayor pro temp. And this is the information and the responsibilities, which include an emergency manager plan, being a member of that team and getting that all put together. Uh, he, the CER team director, which would be in charge of the community emergency response team, which will be just volunteers.
Yeah, we already have some people in the community.
We have a CER team.
We have a CER team.
Yeah.
We have an extensive CER.
I've been here two years and never seen anybody get together.
We have. We have about.
Been here two years on this.
Last year.
Yeah.
We did last year, but when Gina was here, we got together every month.
Well, it's gotta be, if, if they haven't, if they haven't went through drills, it's not.
No, we go to League City. We don't do them here.
We, we still have to work, know who you're working with. And most of the time it will be the local.
And we have a citizen on patrol that is a lengthy list too that fell by the wayside.
And we're gonna, we're gonna pick that back up.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I have member lists on both of those.
Yes, good. Thank you. Please send it to me. Yes, we're gonna be bringing that volunteerism back. Um, you see, mayor pro temp has a lot of responsibilities. And uh, assisting financing budget, assisting establishing the liaison coordinators, Galveston, uh, county mayors. City services, police department, fire department, EMS, JBIC.
Do you want someone then that's on to the CER program to take that? It's hard time to play.
Uh, that's, yeah, or, or become part of that board.
Send on my volunteer coordinating, my air volunteer coordinating with you on that.
Yes, we're looking forward to it.
It's lots of hours to become trained.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, trained. My other qualifications are fire department.
You're trying, yeah.
So all we're trying to do is, we're just redirecting. I mean, we're just getting everything back together. Let's, let's start at zero now. I mean, you know, let's start in, even if things haven't worked, let's, let's, let's make it even better for some things that aren't working. And that's all I'm asking is everybody's uh input, everybody's uh participation for sure. Other than that, uh, let me see. Just so the community knows, we do have a code enforcement officer now. Next month in September, some of the things that I wanna be discussing uh in the the first meeting is, when, when's our video, best video in these meetings?
Uh, we, yeah, we, we shouldn't be, have been running uh even by then.
Okay. And then the other thing is, get these TVs turned on and then I don't, I know John had a lot to input, so we need to get him in there with, with Debbie and make that happen, I would say.
And no, we might kidnap Dave.
Yeah.
Getting over here.
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe.
Yeah. Other than that, I think that's it. Any other discussion you'd buy before we close this thing down?
No.
I guess we're ready to do our journey. We, we have time to second all that for this meeting?
No, sir.
Let's do it.
All right, good, good work.